Okay, are we about ready to go? And we have the first item on our meeting before we can really call it a order. Everybody hear me?
I don't.
Raise your thumb or something if I know you're there.
Okay.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, not on the agenda, on the meeting today is, since we have both our chair and assistant chair not here in the building today, we have to vote a temporary chairman. And so with that, I will open it up for suggestions.
Where?
Or a motion?
I can just give some background on it, too.
Okay.
So because the chair and the vice chair aren't here in person, staff's recommendation would be to have the chair be in person, given that the meeting is virtual and because of the logistics involved with getting people into the call-in and also kind of orchestrating all of that, that it would make sense to have a chair in person. And the process for designating a chair for a meeting is that you'd need a motion and then a vote by all of the commissioners as to designate a chair for today's meeting only.
But they have to be present?
Staff's recommendation would be that the chair should be present.
But I mean, the voting, that all of them can vote?
Everyone would vote, yes.
Okay, alright.
Make the motion. Okay, do I hear a motion?
A motion for Richard as chair.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we'll go for a roll call vote.
We had a motion by Mr. Cannon and a second by...
Howgie.
I'm sorry, Mr. Howgie. So a vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well with that, we can go ahead and open up the meeting with a flag salute. So please join me in a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Let me see, we'll do a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Cannon.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Moss is absent, Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Hersog's absent, Mr. Sevison.
Here.
Mr. Howgie.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to welcome everybody. We'll preface this by saying that things have changed a little bit as we are on Zoom now, and so the process will change a little bit today. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We are doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and social distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered through a completely remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to starting the meeting should be prepared to use a Zoom platform. You may join virtually online by clicking on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure that your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting Please enter the meeting ID, which is 959-99973254. Please press star six to mute yourself. If you would like to make public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon on the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include of the comment from matters night on the agenda, consent item, a timed item. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all our meeting participants and ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do that. Okay, with that, I'll ask the planning director.
If I could just make one comment. I believe the second phone number that you provided, I think one of the numbers got transposed. The number to call in would be 888-788-0099.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, planning director, Valdi?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. I'd like to start out just by giving you an update on the recent Board of Supervisors meeting. The last one we actually had a planning item on was July 28. They took up the third-party appeal on the Truckee River Raft Company. The Board of Supervisors ended up denying that appeal and upheld the Planning Commission's decision to approve the rafting permit. They did add the condition regarding the Bechtel property as far as prohibiting any use of that property as far as as part of the rafting operation. The other item that was taken up that day was the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan, Property 4B Amendment, and that was approved as just as recommended by your commission. Their next meeting where we have planning items would be August 25, and I believe they will be taking up the Placer County Conservation Plan on that day. So that's the board for plan. Do you have a question? Any questions from our Zoom commissioners?
Richard, Sam, can you, or rather, EJ, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Sam.
So one question. So explain that a little bit more for me, if you don't mind, on the rafting company and what we can expect from that.
With a conditional use permit modification and the actual rafting permit was approved, so they are allowed to continue operation over the next three years.
Awesome, thank you for your answer. I ask you that kind of jokingly because my family went on the rafting trip with that company about three weeks ago.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. For Planning Commission schedule coming up, our next meeting is going to be August 27, and we just have one item on that agenda. It's Katoona Residential Care Home in Granite Bay. It was, it's a third-party appeal of the zoning administrators' approval of that project. So that's coming to the commission on appeal. And then following that, we will have a September 10 meeting. I don't have any agenda items to talk about on that for now. Then lastly, I want to announce, make an announcement that Christopher Schmidt, who is sitting here in our audience, was just recently promoted to supervising planner.
Congratulations.
Twenty years at the county and proficiency in all aspects of planning. We're looking forward to him working with our planners, mentor, and further develop their planning skills. So congratulations, Chris.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, that's great.
That concludes my report.
I do have a question. Any new news on Hidden Falls?
Hidden Falls, I believe they are working on the final EIR, and I think they're looking for a fall hearing.
Any decision as to whether it's coming back here?
My understanding, I believe, is the same as the last time in that it will be presented to the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission and the board.
Hey, EJ, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
I would just like to hear if there's any report on the coordination and cooperation with Sutter County and SAC County on the baseline issue. You know, my favorite one.
I don't have any, any update on that, Commissioner Cannon, regarding the baseline road?
Yes, but thank you for letting me know that. I just was thinking about it because I drove down Watt, or rather, baseline, baseline main to Watt and was noticing all the improvements on the Roseville side. So I was very gratified to see that things are really moving forward as well as the Roseville City annexation of the roadways that are out there and new roadways options, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Okay, that's it? Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open up an opportunity for public comment. If anybody would like to make a comment, now would be the time to do it. And so I'm not seeing anybody, but if somebody has a public comment that's not on today's agenda, you're welcome to make it right now. Hi there. Hello? I'm not doing anything. Okay, we can hear you.
Okay.
We're waiting for if anybody wants to make a public comment. Give them a few minutes, a minute. Okay, I guess hearing none, we'll move on with our agenda. And so the next item is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have three items. We have the action agenda from our last July 9 Planning Commission meeting. We have an extension of time for the Kemper Woods Plan Development here in Auburn, as well as the extension of time for the Morgan Place subdivision, which is down in the Roseville area.
I'll make them to approve, Mr. Chair, Richard?
Well, I was going to ask the planning commissioners if anybody wants to pull the item from the agenda.
No.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to pull the item from the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Well, we got two.
Okay, so the motion is to approve all three consent items. And so we'll take a roll call.
Okay. I have a first from Mr. Cannon, a second by Mr. Howgie, so a vote for Mr. Cannon?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me see, now, at this point in time, we'll move on to our timed item, which is the Saber City Estates subdivision. And so Christopher is going to make the presentation first.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners, Chris Schmidt of the Planning Services Division. The project before you today is a subdivision in the Dry Creek West Placer area. We'll be making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on this application. So the project site is within the Saber City neighborhood, which is located south of PFE Road and east of Willerga Road. There's a little bit of history on this site. It was originally part of the Saber City Neighborhood Park. Last May, the Board of Supervisors approved a purchase and sale agreement with Infinity Homes, who is a project applicant, to purchase the project site, a 3.78 acre portion of Saber City Park. The parcel split and sale recorded in December of last year, creating the project site and the remainder of Saber City Park on 1.22 acres. A little closer view of the project site, you see in red. It surrounds Saber City Park to the north. The existing Saber City neighborhood was developed in the late 60s and early 1970s. It's a 3.7 acre parcel. Closer up of the site, mostly dry grassland, some ornamental trees, and also some larger oaks internal to the site, and also along Collin Kelly Drive. A few pictures looking across the project site. Undeveloped, vacant, just a few trees. So land use designations in the area are a mixed bag of low-density, rural, low-density, and medium-density. This parcel here was the extension of time subdivision. The project site itself is high-density residential of four to 10 units per acre, land use designation. Zoning is also mixed. The majority of the site is zoned open space. In the small remainder portion is residential multifamily, density limitation of eight units per acre, combining district of design scenic corridor. So the balance of the neighborhood is mostly RMDL-8. There are a few homes along Billy Mitchell Road that are detached, large, single-family homes, and that zoning is residential, single-family. This is a layout of the proposed 24 lots. Twenty-four lots in total ranging in size from 5,172 square feet to a little over 10,000 square feet. This is an image of the proposed residences, have cottage or seaside architecture design. All will be, all will be single-story with the average square footage of 1,200 square feet of living space. A few entitlements required. The project does require rezoning from residential multifamily DL-8, designs in a corridor combining district and open space to residential multifamily, density limitation of 10 units per acre with designs in a corridor combining district. The testing tentative subdivision map for subdivision of 3.78 acres into 24 single-family lots. Then also a variance to minimum side setback to allow for three feet, where five feet is normally required. So the current zoning would change. There's not a land use change. Parking provided is two driveway spaces per unit. Developers not proposing garages, but applicants could add a garage at a later time. It would be wood fencing installed along the park site, then also wood fencing between the units to provide privacy. New sidewalk along the project frontage, and they also will be repaving portions of Collin Kelly Drive and Vandenberg Circle because they'll be digging up those roads to provide connections to water and sewer.
Chris, can I ask a question while you've got that up?
Sure.
If they're going to allow garages later, exactly where are they putting those? Because the lot lines look really close, so.
Detached behind the homes, most likely.
Oh, it would be behind?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So the lot width required is 40 feet for the corner and 35 feet for the interior. One of the reasons for the zoning change to DM or DL-10 instead of DL-8, like the remainder of Saber City, is because of the lot width requirements. So DL-8 requires 50 feet for corners and 45 feet for interior. The project proposed has newer lots. So most of the lots are 40 feet interior. Some larger 45 feet lot widths, and then 50 feet at the corner. Setbacks are five foot is required. They're asking for a variance for three foot proposed. And it should be noted that existing residences in Saber City, it's a very unique case where the site setbacks are anywhere from zero to six feet. We actually have a three pages of lot numbering in our development notebook that shows what the site setbacks are for each. So it's, it's a mixed bag, but very small setbacks. They do not even conform to our zoning, the DL-8 today. So good traffic added from the project 228 daily trips, including 18 a.m. peak hour trips, 24 peak hour trips. Just for reference, current traffic volume on PFE Road is 5,300 vehicles per day. So not a big impact to the area traffic. Some tree impacts, unfortunately. Nine of the 21 trees would be removed, mostly internal to the site. Also a few along Collin Kelly Drive because of the driveways. But this does show you that there are some trees that will be saved. Since this was deemed surplus, there is a state law that requires affordable housing. Applicants required to provide 25% of the units to be made available to lower-income households. These units will be restricted as affordable for 30 years and are subject to an equity sharing agreement. The balance of the units must be available at an initial cost affordable to low or moderate income buyers. We did do a mitigated negative deck, and every impact was able to be mitigated to below significant. The project was presented to the West Placer MAC in early March. Issues raised at that time were who's going to be providing water service to the site, the amount of water available for the new project, and also concerns about the tree removal. We did not bring this back to the West Placer MAC due to the COVID response that the MACs are not meeting at this time. And with that, Steph recommends approval. And if you do choose to approve the project, we do have one modified condition that I'll show you. So our recommendation is you approve the project, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report packet with the one modification.
I'll make a motion for approval. Commissioner Cannon?
Do you want me to read those?
We have to get public comment.
Vote. Those approvals would include a recommendation to the board to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project as set forth in attachment E of the staff report. Also adopt an ordinance to rezone the project site from RMDL-8, combining district of design scenic corridor and open space to residential multifamily, density limitation of 10 units per acre, combining district of design scenic corridor as shown in attachment C of the staff report. Also approve the Saber City Park Estates vesting tentative subdivision map. And finally, approve the variance to side setbacks, allowing a three-foot setback where five feet is normally required. And all these recommendations are based on the findings in the staff report. This is the modified condition. It has to do with the paving of the roads along the project frontage. I apologize for the last-minute change to this condition, and I'll read what the proposed condition is. The improvement plan shall show the construction of a full pavement, two-inch hot-mix asphalt overlay on the frontage of Vandenberg Circle in front of lots one through five. In addition, the improvement plan shall show the construction of a half pavement with two-inch hot-mix asphalt overlay on the frontage of Vandenberg Circle and Collin Kelly Drive in front of lots six through 24. These improvements shall be to the satisfaction of the Engineering and Surveying Division and the Department of Public Works. All this work shall conform to the requirements of the Placer County General Specifications. So that's modified conditions 29. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, is the applicant online?
Yes.
Okay, well, go ahead, and if you want to say something, go ahead and do it.
I think the project is pretty straightforward. It's definitely complies with the existing neighborhood. I think it's a big improvement. These are brand-new houses that should enhance everything in that neighborhood. On a side note, Placer County Planning Department has been very great to deal with. I've dealt with SAC County on approximately eight infill subdivisions. And so I've been through the process many times, and by far, this has been the most helpful step, and so I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, we'll go ahead and open it for public comment.
Patty, can you hear me? Please unmute your speaker. It's, you'll have three minutes to speak your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Patty.
Morning. I've lived in this particular development since 1961, and I live on Collin Kelly Drive, and a good portion of that development is right across the street from my property. And I have to tell you, I'm very pleased to see you do something with the property. It's been vacant for way too long, and it's been in ISO for a long time. So I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Paulson, to elevate the living conditions in my area.
Thank you very much.
Not hearing any more public comment? One more?
We have another attendee waiting, and we're wondering if you want to raise your hand to make public comment. Sharon, would you like to make public comment? No further comments.
No further public comments? Okay, well, with that, I'll close the public hearing. And anything more to add, Chris? I guess one question I have is, the park apparently has never been developed. And are there any plans with the park?
So you can see there is park facilities. I believe there's a half-basketball court, a play structure, picnic pavilion. So this stays, this was deemed excess. I think originally, I think the county anticipated developing all this land. However, it has become noted, it's been followed since the 1960s.
Okay, good, thank you. Any more questions from the commissioners?
No. I have a comment. I'll just say that I'm really pleased to see this project. Again, it's been commented, this is an infill project that's very consistent with the rest of the development that's around it. To me, it is a significant improvement because of their new structures, and I'm really glad again to see affordable housing moving forward in this county. Every time we can do a project like this, I want to make sure we're giving it its full support. So I'm, Sam, it sounded like you wanted to make the recommendation, so if you want to go forward on that, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion if we're ready.
Or I can do it, doesn't matter.
Commissioner Cannon, and I'm here, and I make the motion to approve the Morgan Place subdivision.
Yep, we have to do all four of those, one by one. It's Saber City.
Okay, Sam, this has to be for board approval? I mean, we're going to recommend to the board.
To recommend to the board. And then, well, if I've got to go to phases one, two, three, and four, maybe I'll let Wayne do it.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we make a recommendation to the board to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the packet as set forth in attachment E of the staff report packet based on the findings in the staff report.
And the erratic condition of approval.
And the erratic condition of the approval.
And I'll second that, thank you, Wayne.
Sure.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
I think he voted, but we didn't hear it.
Can't hear his. Saying yes, I see his lips moving. Got unmuted there.
Yes.
Did we just hear a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to further, oh, did we get there?
And Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to further move that we recommend to the board adoption of an ordinance to rezone the project site from an RMDL-8-DC and O, open space, to RM-DL-10-DC, as shown in the attachment C of the staff report packet, based on the findings in the staff report.
Second, Mr. Cannon.
I have a first for Mr. Nader, a second for Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
I think you're on mute again.
Thank you. And Mr. How, Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, continue to move. Recommendation of the board, approval, approve the Saber City Estates vesting tentative subdivision map, based on the findings in the staff report.
And I would just note that I believe that recommendation would be also subject to the modified condition of approval.
So move.
To Mr. Cannon's second.
First for Mr. Nader, a second for Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
And Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finally, I would move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the variance to side setbacks, allowing a three-foot setback where five feet is normally required, and based on the findings in the staff report.
To Mr. Cannon's second.
First for Mr. Nader, a second for Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
And Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, since this would be going to the Board of Supervisors for approval, we don't really need to deal with the appeals. So with that, unless there's something more from the commission, I will say we're finished.
All right. That was a quick one. Man, you got it done before you left.
Thanks.